We'll call to order tonight's Auburn City Council meeting in the Committee of the Whole for July 11th, 2023. The City Council should have the minutes from the Committee of the Whole from June the 20th. Are there any additions or corrections of those minutes? If not, is there a move to approve?
So moved.
A motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes carry through. Auburn Downtown Redevelopment Authority, Mayor Pro Tem Whitten.
Yes, sir. We have two vacancies. Terms begin July 19, 2023, and end July 18, 2024. Both incumbents, Joe Donaldson and David Reeves, have served two full terms. For the first position, I would like to nominate Ashley Aaron.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second for Ashley Aaron. Any further comments about Mr. Aaron? Thoughts? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll confirm that later on in the agenda.
And for the second position, I would like to nominate Christopher Smith, who I think goes by Hunter Smith.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second for Christopher Smith. Any comments? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Indian Pines Public Park Authority, Mayor Pro Tem Whitten.
Yes, sir. We have one vacancy. We have an incumbent, Vince Swanson, who served one partial term. I would like to renominate Vince Swanson for a full term.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Vince Swanson for a full term. Any comments or questions? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. At this time, I'd like to ask the City Council, as we move forward till next Tuesday, where there will be an appointment to the Auburn Planning Commission. We do have an incumbent that has served a partial term, Dr. Joe Aestrop. And in lieu of that, what the council has done over the last four and a half years with planning and school board, if there is an incumbent, the council has considered suspending the rules when in regards to interviews and then just making the nomination and the potential appointment at the next meeting. So at this point in time, I'd like the City Council to please suspend the rules and as we move forward to next Tuesday night regarding the interviews for this planning commission appointment. Any thoughts or comments on that? Megan, is that a head nod or do I need to just ask for a raise of hands on this?
I think it just helps if you need to have a majority that agrees to that. So I'd at least do raising a hand.
Okay. So all in favor of suspending the rules for the next planning commission appointment, please raise your hand.
For interviews for the next planning commission appointment.
Excuse me. Thank you for correcting me. You've continued to do that. Okay. All right. I think that's eight. Okay. All right.
And what that does mean to clarify, though, is that you still can appoint whomever you wish. It just means you're not choosing to interview anybody.
Correct.
That doesn't change the status of that.
Thank you. Okay. Questions on tonight's agenda for the city manager? Questions regarding the agenda tonight. Okay. City Manager, is anything for us?
I have nothing.
Okay. Is there a move to adjourn?
They're moved.
Okay. We'll call it order tonight's Auburn City Council meeting for July the 11th, 2023. Certainly welcome those who are with us in person. We welcome all those who are watching through our streaming services and who are listening on WANI. At this point in time, Lindsay with the roll call.
Adams.
Here.
Coblenz.
Here.
Dawson.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Whitten.
Here.
Here. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. It is the first meeting of the month of July, and so at this time, our video will recognize our outstanding employees, including Tiffany Moore, our Outstanding Employee of the Month.
We're proud today to introduce you to our July Employee of the Month, and I have a memorandum here from Kevin Howard and Scott Cummings, written to Megan McGowan-Crouch, the City Manager. When Tiffany Moore began working at the City of Auburn as customer service specialist with Development Services, she demonstrated the work ethic and personality of a track star. Whether sprinting to accomplish tasks in a professional and efficient manner or hurdling obstacles to assist customers and support the Development Services team, Tiffany exhibits exceptional dedication and enthusiasm each day. Tiffany provides outstanding service to each and every customer. I have received numerous comments from the public regarding the positive demeanor by which Tiffany greeted and assisted them when visiting Development Services. She showed further initiative as she took on the responsibility of coordinating with planning services and information technology and effort to scan and achieve and archive our filing system. Tiffany worked with other staff to collectively devise a strategy to scan documents for temporary storage on our server and eventual migration to our new digital archiving system. By Tiffany's efforts in this process, we have been able to efficiently scan many of the documents and are on pace to utilize available resources to finish scanning and avoid contracting out the work, saving potentially $20,000. When an opportunity arose to assist the Planning Department, Tiffany took the initiative to step in. She took on additional responsibilities to support the Planning Department with administrative assistant duties that include assisting customers, preparing planning commission packets, and assisting with City Council submissions, among many other tasks. Tiffany recently joined the Planning Department permanently in this role. Tiffany responds to every opportunity with enthusiasm and commitment to professionalism that demonstrates the character of an Employee of the Month for the City of Auburn. Thank you. Congratulations.
employees, and we applaud their recognition this evening. During the Committee of the Whole, the City Council appointed Ashley Aaron and Christopher Smith, who goes as Hunter, to the Auburn Downtown Redevelopment Authority, and we want to thank Joe Donaldson and David Reeves for their service over the last couple of terms. The City Council also appointed Vince Swanson to the Indian Pines Public Park Authority and appreciate Vince's work serving one partial term, and now he'll get a full term. And then the City Council also made the decision to suspend the rules regarding interviews for the upcoming planning commission appointment that will be made next week. Under announcements tonight, just a few things. I just want to say thank you to everybody who was involved in making fireworks, another outstanding Fourth of July again at our community, and there's a lot of work goes into that. There's a lot of moving parts that goes into that, and I appreciate it. We got a break on the weather, and it was a beautiful night for fireworks. And I just want to remind everybody, I get a lot of information, and from time to time, things just strike me. And Project Uplift is an organization that works with our youth and our children in our communities, and not just in the City of Auburn, but all over the area. And they do an outstanding job. They are staffed primarily from a volunteer standpoint with Auburn University students, but they've got an outstanding staff who are investing in our children in the right manner. And I just want to say thank you to Project Uplift and everything that they do. All right. Does anybody, any other council members have an announcement they'd like to make tonight?
Yes, sir, if I could. The Auburn Downtown Merchants Association is having a week from Friday, a thing called Cheers on the Corner, and it is their biggest fundraiser of the year. They anticipate selling about 1,000 tickets. So our streets will be full of people. It's not about drinking. It's all about the cheer. And there will be samples of things available, but I plan to be there and walk around and not drink, just so you know. And they're excited about putting this on for the City of Auburn, and it's just a major Auburn event. So that's a week from Friday, and I think the hours are six to nine, 1,800 to 2,100.
There you go. They do an outstanding job. Every year, they host that event, and I appreciate all the coordination that goes along with that, and thank our staff. A lot of people make a lot of sacrifices to make that happen.
And they said, rain or shine.
Rain or shine. I got it. All right. Anyone else? Okay.
One more word. I would just like to say, we did the approval of three individuals tonight for boards and commissions, and I'm just amazed at the quality of the applicants that we get. They're just excellent, and I'm just so proud that citizens want to represent Auburn and be involved at that level.
Yep. Thank you. I concur. All right. We'll go ahead and move forward. There are, I do not believe we have a member from the SGA here tonight, so we'll move past Auburn University Communications. And at this time, it's Citizens Communications on items on tonight's agenda. This is just items that are on our agenda this evening. If you'd like to address the City Council, please come forward and give your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak. Okay. Seeing no one, we'll move forward to City Managers' Communications.
We don't have any City Managers' Communications, so if you're ready for the consent agenda, does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
They're moved.
Second. A motion is second to approve the consent agenda. Any questions? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda is approved. Resolutions?
Item 10A authorizes a tax abatement modification for Donghee America Incorporated, located at 2550 Innovation Drive. The company is expanding and anticipates hiring 100 additional employees over the next two years and investing in additional $82 million in building expansions and capital equipment. This modification is due to a previous approval via Resolution 23107 on June 6th due to a company name change. We're just changing from what was Donghee, Alabama LLC to Donghee America Incorporated.
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right. And item 10B1 authorizes the purchase of 10 in-car cameras, 20 body-worn cameras, and 20 tasers from Axon Enterprises Incorporated for the Police Department in the amount of $257,779.10.
Move for approval.
Second. All right. We have a motion second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10B2 authorizes a contract with D&amp;J Enterprises Incorporated for the fiscal year 2023 Streets Resurfacing Project in the amount of $2,750,000.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion second. Any comments or questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The determination of what streets are tentatively to be resurfaced is based on the Paver Program. Could you explain what the Paver Program is, please?
Sure thing. I'm going to get one of our engineers to explain. So we've got both Scott Cummings here, the Development Services Executive Director, and Brandy Ezel, our traffic engineer. Scott?
I'll try to take a start at this, and Brandy can help me out if I can't fill in the gaps. But so the Paver Program is something that it's relative to new technology being applied to pavers, to streets. And so what it is, is there's a van that rides around the streets of Auburn. And back up the old way, we used to do this, is actually riding around in a truck, and people doing this, and it would take at least a year, is that right, Brandy, to assess all our streets? And so with this Paver, it takes a few weeks because they're riding at regular speed through the streets. The van is equipped with all kinds of devices. They're taking photographs of the streets. They're recording that data video so that we can have this data to look at and look at cracks and defects in the street. They also have sensing devices to analyze vibrations in the street, to recognize potholes and, you know, unleveling in the road and things like that that it picks up. All this data is then collected, and they take it back and analyze that data. From that data analysis, they provide defect scores to the streets, and that is further compiled and developed into risk scores which rank the streets, and we utilize that data to prioritize year after year how those streets should be placed in resurfacing. So it allows us to accomplish the task in a much quicker time and get some better pavement condition index data to be able to make recommendations like tonight.
I also think it's important to note, we had some questions leading up to this, conditions happen in between the time that we do this evaluation, and today, such as a construction project off of Owens Road. And so sometimes either things deteriorate further based on heavy traffic that was not anticipated, among other things. And sometimes that does get adjusted above and beyond the Paver recommendations. Something could happen in the field, or we could have a major equipment, piece of equipment fall on Gouda Road or wherever. It may change a little bit of the face of that, but typically, we use this data.
And I appreciate that, and I understand that this is a tentative list that was provided with our packets, also part of the e-packets. Of course, the public had an opportunity to see it and ask questions. The damaged portions of Owens Road that was due to the construction traffic, although it's not listed on this list, it is going to be, it is budgeted and will be prioritized accordingly?
Absolutely. There's been a number of questions about that, and constituents have reached out to both you and Mary Anders, who lives in the vicinity. And there is no question, there's also something, and we're going to get out of the City Managers' level of expertise, called a full-depth reclamation, and it means that we may have to do a lot more work in aspects of Owens Road and some other things that still need to be evaluated. But absolutely, positively, as part of this contract, Owens Road will be repaved. Public Works can also speak. Dan, do you have anything to add to that in terms of our temporary patching until we get there?
So we've made a handful of temporary patches to Owens Road that, obviously, they've taken a hit with the traffic on that road. But at the same time, we're going to stay on top of it, and we'll continue to ride Owens and make patches where we can and when they're needed.
We're also asking the contractor to move this up in priority when we know what we know. We know it's difficult for the citizens. There's also been some questions about damage by contractors in this area. To the extent of what we're able to defend legally, we will, they will have skin in the game. But also, when you have a Paver survey showing deterioration in the road prior to them riding heavy trucks on it, we also are not very defensible, asking them to pay for a road that was likely to deteriorate. Yes, they were running heavier trucks, but we have limits in which we can ask people to pay for certain things, or we can legally defend that. So we'll push the envelope as far as we can make them responsible, but we also have a responsibility because of the age and condition of the road.
The portion of the road that's been severely damaged by the heavy construction traffic was not identified as a problem under the Paver Program, apparently.
Scott responded to that, yeah.
I'd like to clarify that. It was identified, but further out. The construction traffic actually exacerbated the conditions to worsen at a much faster rate. So it moved very quickly up the scale to become a higher priority. So it wasn't that it had not been anticipated. It was just anticipated further out.
I got you. Okay. Thank you. That helps.
Yes.
And what is the potential schedule for getting started on this? Not any particular road, but the program as a whole?
We have contract execution and so on. It takes at least 30 days. That's just normal because of bonding and all kinds of things that we do. After that, they get going on a scheduled basis. Brandy, do you have any idea from the contract or how the scheduling actually works?
Yeah. I think they're prepared to move forward very quickly once we get the contract documents all executed. So I think you're right on target with the 30 days plus a little bit of mobilization time.
And we're pushing, and we'll continue to push as hard as we can to get this area fixed as quickly as possible. One of our challenges is we need the residents regularly contact us, saying heavy trucks are off the road, but we want to make sure they're off the road. I don't want to go in there and resurface this and do all the things that we need to do and get further damage. We need to be sure they're done before we make those specific repairs, and very much appreciate the patience of the residents. But we also, when we fix this, we want to fix it once.
I'm sorry. I've got a couple more questions here.
You've got the four.
There are, there is some area that the contractor is going to be held responsible for. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes. Specifically, it's the area closest to where the street ends and their development started. And that was some areas that we had not identified as had deteriorated and would not have been on our list to repair. They'll repair that.
All right. And I guess the last thing I want to point out is, we're not voting tonight on this list. We're voting on execution of a contract.
Correct. This is the anticipated list, yes.
Yeah. It's important for the public to understand that this list was a tentative list and not a definitive list of what's going to be worked on, prioritized or whatever. So I just want to make that point for those of them that are watching and concerned about the various roads. And I guess one further question, I was asked, how does the public input, how is the public able to recommend a road for resurfacing?
So they're certainly welcome to email at any time, and that's fine. But the thing is, the public's perception, one of the challenges that we have, is people see cracks in roads, and they see what looks like tar in them, for lack of a better term. That's called crack sealing, and that's actually maintaining the road for long term. So we have a lot of people that will complain and say a road's in bad condition when indeed it's in good condition. And so perception is reality. I understand that. But sometimes they may be seeing things either that we're not seeing, or minor things that we could fix can make it better. But we heavily rely on the Paver conditions and our staff's expertise, and sometimes things do deteriorate, as Owens Road does, in a hurry. So always reach out because sometimes we don't, we don't know what they're experiencing on their street. But it doesn't always mean it's going to bump up in priority either.
So they should reach out to council members as well as engineering department?
It's always preferred that they reach out to the staff directly because that's the quickest route.
To engineering?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Engineering or Public Works. Really, for Public Works is a great place to start because Public Works is the one who would make any repairs. So if you see a pothole in the Fix-It app, any of that, or unusual cracking, or you see something weird about the gutters or whatever, the best thing to do, you know, you can call 501-3000. That's Public Works, or utilize the Fix-It app. And that allows us to get on it as quickly as possible and get service taken care of.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I've got a question too.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So this list here, and I understand you said tentative list, but are these going to be the roads that would come, would these, these roads come back to the council and say, and then there'll be a timeframe on when they're going to resurface? Or when will we see it again?
You're not, you won't see it again, meaning you can ask me for an update if anything's changed. I'm happy to provide that. But this is generally, for this dollar amount, what we think we can pave.
Okay. So but there's no time period on each?
There's a time period in the contract. These contracts usually take 12 months or so. And I don't know how many day contract this is. Brandy, you may not know off the top of your head.
This is a one-year contract, but it is executable. We can extend it up to two more years after this.
Right. So this is, for now, you've got another $3 million or so budgeted next fiscal year to do another big list, where actually we've increased resurfacing budgets tremendously, trying to get further and further ahead. And I may bump in the mid-biennium budget even further if we need to, to get caught up on some things. COVID didn't help, and supply chain doesn't help with some things. And if asphalt plants break down, which we have one in the vicinity, then we don't have asphalt. So we're working handily to get as caught up as we can. I think it's important that the public understand the city doesn't have the equipment or expertise to repave roads. We can repair them, but you need an asphalt plant, you need a milling machine, you need a number of things. And as a lot of you tease me about also a striping contractor, which has also been a problem. And so we're working through all that. But that's the list for fiscal '23, and we're at the end of fiscal '23. So remember, hot on its heels, you know, and I don't know if we can work with somebody simultaneously or invoke that further, but if, I have a desire to get as caught up as we can, as quickly as we can, as the rest of the staff does. And Block Grant also, Connie is paying for some of these.
You good, Connie?
I'm good.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yes, sir, sir.
So this list, this list represents the worst roads in Auburn. I mean, this is our top priority.
This is whether the staff's full recommendation is these have the highest need, plus what Councilman Griswold mentioned, the remainder of Owens Road that is being dealt with. Yes.
Okay. And there is a priority list, and we're not voting on that, as he pointed out. It's somewhere, and it's in a rank order, and probably has Owens Road on top of it.
So what we do when we, yes, Owens Road be added, but what we do on an annual basis, like we'll signal in mid-biennium what we think we're going to do during '24, but there's always a caveat as what would happen with Owens Road, where it could bump something out of priority because it's a bigger priority.
Okay. Thanks. And we talked about multi-use paths and bicycle lanes, where they are, where it is appropriate to put those, and where we're able to put those. We're giving conscious effort to designating that space. And I don't know that we'll get any new ones, but at least will be looked at. It'll be analyzed and possibly.
Yeah. Each and every year, prior to issuing this list, anything that's on a priority list, if it's slated for bike lanes and we're able to make that happen, we do. But some of it is in resurfacing. We're resurfacing the bike lanes and restriping them if they already exist. Brandy, are there any additions that you're aware of on this list? I don't believe so.
Not on this list.
I have a personal request, because I used to ride a bicycle when I was a little younger. And the level, when you pave a street, and I don't think we're going to run into that here, but when you pave a street, you may wind up with asphalt here and concrete here where the gutter is. And that's very dangerous for a bicycle. And I just asked Dick and Jimmy to be careful when they put that pavement down next to the gutter, that they don't leave a two-inch raised surface area. But in this case, we'll be scrubbing the old asphalt off and starting over. So I don't, I don't think that'll be an issue.
We'll have, Brandy's also a cycling enthusiast herself, so she's our best person to speak to this.
Thank you, Megan. Yes, I do bike. But that is caused, as you said, when it's just a resurfacing and no milling is done. And that was a practice that we did several years ago, but is no longer our practice. So you shouldn't see, other than a reasonable amount, you wouldn't see the big difference that you do now.
Yeah. We've improved tremendously on that. And you see in our older sections of town is where you see some of the biggest, and it feels like four inches at times. And that's getting, as we go through and resurface, Gay Street still has some areas. Some of that's getting corrected on College Street with current projects, and Sanford, it also gets corrected every time we resurface.
Right. Thanks. I don't know if you can fold this in, but some of the bicycle lanes that are there, the striping is gone, like Thatch from Gay to Armstrong, I believe is a good example, where there's, there's no striping left. So I don't know if there's any room in the budget for that, but I just throw that out there for you.
So go ahead, Brandy.
We can look at that with our restriping contract this year. And I'm not sure if that's on there or not, but I'll check and see.
Yeah. That's one of our challenges is what we call thermoplast sunny is a, the reflective reflective striping, and a number of council members have had a lot of questions about that, and we have very limited contractors who do that, so sometimes the temporary fades until we get the sparkling kind and reflective kind back in, and we do, and a lot of you send me requests for, you'll see crosswalks or things in your wards, let me know if you're seeing some fading, and we'll double-check that against our list.
Thank you much.
Anyone else? All right, we have a motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10B3 authorizes a construction contract with WW Compton Contractor LLC for the public safety training facility, Phase 2 classroom building project, in the amount of $3.9 million or $3,929,000.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion second. Any comments or questions?
I'd just like to point out one thing on this. I think the cost actually went down. I want to take a moment to make that point and to get some clarification on how it went down. I think the term is value engineering, and the price of what we wound up bidding went from 4.4 million to 3.9 million, and that's a half a million bucks.
It did, but our budget amount was lower, so that was a consultant-generated amount, dollar amount, saying, okay, your budget is 3 million, I think it's going to cost 4.4 million, and we ended up at 3.9 million. So the savings came, you know, and to understand, as I had some council members ask, did we reduce scope? We did not reduce scope to what you're speaking to. We did value engineer some things to keep it down, and we got reasonable bid prices. But right now, we go off of estimates at the time that we budget from our consulting teams, and things increase. And I'll tell you a few key things about this building that are important, is, it is not responsible of staff to come to you to say, one year later, we need to expand this building by one more bay for a second fire truck, because we have to remobilize a contractor, we get higher inflation. So we did some things here where we have a double bay, we have the height we need, and other things to hold us in this building for the foreseeable future. Will, did I miss anything?
I think one of the other areas that we really tried to look forward was in the large training space, and we have a retractable wall that'll really be useful in using that venue for large training and, you know, other meeting events.
And as we said, I indicated to some of you, we intend to offer this as a polling location to Lee County, and we intend to also use it in municipal elections where it's big enough in size for there. Our hope is eventually to allow some community meetings there. It wouldn't surprise me if the council met there and some work sessions and other things, but we're not staffing this facility at this time to make it a regular community meeting space.
Any other comments or questions?
We're excited about it.
It's going to be great. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
Okay, at this time, it's an opportunity for the citizens to address the City Council about anything that might be on your mind. You have three minutes. We'd ask that you come to the podium and give us your name and address for the record. I want to remind the citizens to please be professional and respectful, and this is not a time to identify members of the staff and make pointed comments regarding them specifically. Yes?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Robert Wilkins, 261 Dempsey Drive, Auburn, Alabama. The city unofficial nickname is the loveliest village on the plains, taken from a line in the poem, "The Deserted, This Deserted Village" by Oliver Goldsmith, published in 1770. It's a work of social commentary, condemns rule, depopulation, the pursuit of excessive wealth. The poem opens with a description of a village named Auburn, written in the past tense. The first four lines says, "Sweet Auburn, loveliest village of the plain, where health and plenty cheer the laboring swain, where smiling spring its easiest visit paid, and parting summer's lingering blooms delayed." In Wikipedia, the city of Auburn stated that the city of Auburn in 1980 had a backlash against what we've seen as an inefficient, effectual, excuse me, city council led to the election of Jan Dempsey as mayor in 1980, the removal of the previous government system in favor of a city manager system. Over the next 20 years, Auburn's aggressively pursued industries, leading to a nearly 1,200% increase in the number of industrial jobs over the next 20 years. Later, Auburn began to have rapid residential growth. But now the city bureaucracies are taking control of Auburn without the citizens' approval. The council is fed information by the bureaucrats, for example, with short-term rental, were given no information or data in making a proper decision. But I feel that the addition of the three new council members have woke up some of the other council members to begin to question where that information is coming from and the lack of information to make proper decisions. This past November, Mary Anders got a 288% increase in his salary for a part-time mayor, and the city manager had a whopping $35,000 raise per year this past March. Neither seemed concerned about the city council salaries. I've spoken to many citizens, and a large majority of them feel this council should get a healthy raise from the $600 a month to $1,500. Here are some council members' monthly salaries in the state of Alabama. Huntsville, $2760 per month. Tuscaloosa, $2320. Gulf Shores, $1,220. Daphne, Alabama, $1,083. You, the council, spend lots of time, spending hours to talk to citizens like me, go into functions, go into council meetings, and being on committees, et cetera. We believe that the Auburn City Council needs to get back the control of our city. Thank you.
Who'll be next?
Reggie Hall, 830 North Downhill Drive. All right, so I'm here today because it's a real concern in Auburn, Alabama, Lee County, for public safety. The guys, the police officers who murdered Ricardo Gary lied to the state investigators. I have a copy that I'll give each and every one of you. I'm a witness to actually seeing the video footage just last month, and this report, the State Bureau Investigation Report, this is Officer, First Respondent Officer Jones, right, and he says that Sergeant O'Hara came to Ricardo with his hands up, and as he was approaching Ricardo, Ricardo reached down to pick up the stick, and then he went, he turned, and he hit him in the head with the stick. And no one's report that they mentioned that Ricardo Gary assaulted a police officer, which is a big deal. They never mentioned that. So I am a witness to watching the video, and I'm going to demonstrate exactly what I seen. So this is Ricardo, I'm going to talk louder, this is Ricardo, right here.
You need to stay at the podium. Yeah, and face, face the council.
Like that, right here, I can do this?
Just face us.
Okay, I wanted to, the mic, okay. So he's talking to Gaither, right here. He sees the guy that's been following him for over 10 to 15 minutes approximately. So he sees them, he turns, the stick was on the ground, he picks up the stick and tries to walk away. O'Hara said, "Hey, don't you let him do that, don't you let him do that, put the stick down." As Ricardo walking away, he comes up and he yanks the stick from the back of his hand, from the back of Ricardo, calls Ricardo to turn around and say, "Hit back, man," and they tase him, "Ah, hit the ground." So that's exactly how it happened, and they jumped on him, tased him, and sat there until he, they suffocated him or whatever the cause of determined death, but y'all say it's undetermined, but I want the city of Auburn to release the video, and I've been pushing for this the whole time, and I've been following y'all, and I've been only, each and every last one of everybody in the city of Auburn, I have so much evidence, and this is a federal thing that's going on here in Auburn, Alabama, and it's a public safety issue because the officers are still out there patrolling, and y'all are condol, y'all are promoting this behavior that is absurd and absolutely disturbing. If anybody else were to see that video, anybody else, and if, 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 y'all, the city wants to put out and say that this man is crazy and all of that, let's see it then, because he was in his right mind, I put out a video on November 27th or 28th, 28th, right after it happened, he was with his friend's house on the porch, just having a cordial conversation, but not a crazy man, so let's, let's trade some evidence here. Y'all haven't said anything, and everybody's sweeping under the rug, but this is a big thing that's going on here, and it won't stand because I won't rest until it's over.
Who'll be next?
Today, I drove over to the Opelika Sports Plex to see the renovations. They've bulldozed down the outdoor splash pad for children. Gone are the red and purple mushrooms that sprayed water on kids in swimsuits, buckets tipped water over their heads, they ran through a tunnel of mist, they yelled and laughed. It was a children's paradise. The moms loved it, too. The kids slept better for the exercise and had sweet dreams of a beautiful world. What would you think of an adult who bulldozed down the splash pad, replaced it with mountains of filth from a city dump, an adult who urged kids to play in that and said, "Don't mind the stench or the flies or diseases you'll catch"? What would you think of such an adult? What kind of person would want to deprive, deprive children of the happiness of innocent, clean, healthy joy and replace it with filth and sadness? Once the Auburn Public Library was a happy place for children and moms, now it introduces kids to unnatural vice. They have four copies of this book. This book is gay. Page 200, Boy on Boy Sex, quote, "The anus responds to being played with." Page 201, Doing the Sex, Handjob, Blowjob, Douche for Butt Sex. So who doesn't creep into your sex life? One of you gets on top, one is bottom, gets the willy up his bum, quotes, "You need lube and sex, anal sex hurts." Director Tyler Whitten is responsible. Director Tyler Whitten is responsible.
Ms. Shump, please stop.
Yes, a little too much truth. Thank you.
Who'll be next?
I just want to give everybody the...
No, sir, you cannot come back, you cannot come back. Just hand it right there. Yep, yep.
I'll hand them out to everybody. How many do you have?
How many people got it?
There are nine.
There's nine.
And then one for the record.
I got like two, but I want to get some of these good people out here that can help me copy these.
Just need one more, Mr. Hall.
We'll close this in Communications. Is there a move to adjourn?
I move.